Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise as I invite Counselor Jackson to the podium to introduce today's clergy. And after the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as Counselor Jackson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am with joy and honor today here to present to you Reverend Dr. Roberto Miranda. He is from the South End Church of La Ynda Judas. I've visited many times and today in looking at his bio, I see why he is so well-versed. Dr. Miranda attended Phillips Academy at Andover and graduated in 1974. Upon graduation, he entered Princeton and studied at the Woodrow Wilson School of Public and International Affairs as a Woodrow Wilson scholar graduating in 1978. And he spent a year working at the admissions office at Princeton and then entered Harvard in 1979 to do graduate work in the Department of Romance Languages. I didn't know about that, okay. Graduating in 1989 with a PhD in Romance Languages and Literature. And in 2013, he received an honorary doctorate from Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. Also has been also founded in 1999, La Ynda Judas Higher Education Resource Center and has served thousands of Latino and African-American youth in their efforts to enhance their academic performance and enter college and receive financial aid. Dr. Miranda also has been a connector in the South End community. If folks know where his church is, the corner of North Hampton Street and Harrison Ave was a difficult place not too many years ago. It was a place where you saw visible prostitution. It was a place where there was a grocery store-sized liquor store right across the street from his church. And staying with that community and building that community and actually continuing to build his church and his mission in that community has actually brought light to darkness, has actually displaced a lot of the negativity and we see positivity happening in a corner of our city where we used to see negativity. The power of faith is seen by the life and the mission of Dr. Roberto Miranda. And I'm very, very happy to present him to the Boston City Council for our prayer today. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm honored to be here this morning and I've decided to, instead of a prayer, just to read words of scripture, the prayer of Solomon in the first book of Kings as he inaugurated the temple. I know in Boston is a time of many beginnings and so I'd like to offer this word of blessing through the words of Solomon, 1 Kings, Chapter 8. "Then Solomon stood before the altar of the Lord in the presence of all the assembly of Israel and spread out his hands toward heaven, and he said, 'Lord, God of Israel, there is no God in heaven above or on earth below like you who keep your covenant and mercy with your servants, who walk before you with all their hearts.' O Lord, my God, listen to the cry and the prayer which your servant is praying before you today, that your eyes may be opened toward this place night and day, toward the place which you said, 'My name shall be there,' that you may hear the prayer which your servant makes toward this place. And may you hear the supplication of your servant and of your people when they pray toward this place, here in heaven, your dwelling place, and when you hear, forgive. When your people are defeated before an enemy because they have sinned against you and when they turn back to you and confess your name and pray and make supplication to you in this place, then hear in heaven and forgive the sin of your people and bring them back to the land which you gave to their fathers. Whatever prayer, whatever supplication is made by anyone or by all your people, when each one knows the plague of his own heart and spreads out his hands toward this temple, then here in heaven, your dwelling place, and forgive and act and give to everyone according to all their ways whose heart you know, for you alone know the hearts of all the sons of men, that they may fear you all the days that they live in the land which you gave to your fathers.'" And so it was when Solomon had finished praying all this prayer and supplication to the Lord, then he arose from before the altar of the Lord, from kneeling on his knees with his hands spread up to heaven, then he stood and blessed all the assembly of Israel with a loud voice, saying, 'Blessed be the Lord who has given rest to his people according to all that he promised. There has not failed one word of all his good promise, which he promised through his servant Moses. May the Lord our God be with us, as he was with our fathers. May he not leave us nor forsake us, that he may incline our hearts to himself to walk in all his ways and to keep his commandments and his statutes and his judgments, which he commanded our fathers. And may these words of mine, with which I have made supplication before the Lord, be near the Lord our God day and night, that he may maintain the cause of his servant and the cause of his people, as each day may require. Then all the peoples of the earth may know that the Lord is God; there is no other. Let your heart therefore be loyal to the Lord our God, to walk in his statute and keep his commandments, as at this day. Amen."
Amen. I thank you Pastor Roberto Miranda for your inspiring message. At this time, Counselor Jackson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America. For nations, for God, for liberty, for justice.
Thank you Counselor Jackson and thank you Pastor Miranda. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Murphy to please come to the deus. And Counselor Murphy will make the first of two presentations. And I'd like to ask Elliot Laffer, who was the Executive Director of the Groundwater Trust here in the city of Boston for many years, to come forward. Counselor Murphy, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure for me to be here to actually honor two folks that have worked with us closely in different capacities over the last several years. The first of which is Elliot Laffer. And I'm going to read the resolution. A lot of whereas's here. Whereas, Mr. Elliot Laffer is taking on a new role after serving as the first Executive Director of the Boston Groundwater Trust since 2004. And where Mr. Laffer grew up in Bayonne, New Jersey, and graduated from Rensselaer Polytech RPI with a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering in 1970. And whereas Elliot met his wife, Gail, who has joined us here as well, who just retired after 40 years as an elementary school teacher in Holbrook. And they met at the Brookline-Brighton-Newton Jewish Community Center in Cleveland Circle in 1972 and were married one year later. Whereas Elliot spent over 30 years in sales and sales management of engineered equipment for air filtration, dust control, and air conditioning. Whereas Mr. Laffer has been a director of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay since 1977 and has served that organization at different times as treasurer, vice president, and chairman. Whereas the citizens of Boston were well-represented by Elliot Laffer as a citizen member of the Steering Committee for the Civic Review of the Construction of Poply Place, a member of the Community Advisory Committee for the Construction of 500 Boylston Street, and the Vice Chair of the Prup Act, which wrote the guidelines and has advised the BRA on the rebuilding of the Prudential Center since 1986. Whereas it was Elliot's membership on the CAC for 500 Boylston Street that provided Elliot's first knowledge about the groundwater issue. And whereas the CAC, for the first time, set guidelines which required a major project to monitor groundwater levels and to stop construction if the levels dropped below an agreed-upon level. Whereas Mr. Laffer contends that all of the experience he has had in NAB and project review have helped to shape the successes that they have had on groundwater issues at the Boston Groundwater Trust. And whereas Mr. Elliot Laffer stepped down in October of 2014 as the Executive Director of the Boston Groundwater Trust to assume the role of Chief Strategy Officer, from which he will retire on March 13, 2015, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Boston City Council offer their gratitude, congratulations, and best wishes for many productive and happy years for Mr. Elliot Laffer and his family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say that this means an awful lot to me. It's nice to be recognized when you've put in efforts to try and make the city a better place. I want to talk a little bit about the Groundwater Trust and what we've accomplished and why I think it's important to the city and to all of us. Because the Groundwater Trust has been successful and all the work on groundwater has been successful because instead of trying to find fault, we've tried to find solution. We've worked very, very hard to cooperate. And that's been true across City Hall with the help of the City Council and certainly through the administration. It's been true in the Board of Appeals, the BRA, and Special Services Department and the state agencies. The agencies have come together in the city-state groundwater working group, which has included the MBTA and Boston Water and Sewer and the MWRA, as well as the city and the state and the Groundwater Trust, and has really worked on solutions and gotten people to commit funding and efforts to solve a problem that wasn't simple. And I hope that all of us can take some inspiration from that and look to that to solve other problems. And maybe some of those intractable issues will get more tractable, if that's a word, when we look at them that way, instead of looking at who we can point a finger at and say, "It's your fault." Thanks for this, it means a lot. Counselor Murphy would like to invite all up for a photo. If there's any family members who would like to take photos, they're welcome to stand in front of Ellen and do that. Before we take a picture, I just want to, I served on the Groundwater Trust for many years and I want to recognize the enormous commitment that this one man has made to save the heart and core of the city. Because many of the buildings, some of our oldest and most cherished buildings and blocks throughout the Back Bay, Bay Village, South End, if the Groundwater Trust wasn't as successful as it was, many of them would not be there today. They would have collapsed and much to our chagrin. So I want to thank him personally for allowing me to work with him and for the great job he's done on behalf of the city. So thank you, Elliot. At this time, Counselor Murphy will make the second of his two presentations. Yes. Again, this individual, Elliot, needs no introduction to us. We all know him and worked with him for many years. The past chief of the Boston Police Department, Dan Linsky.
Thank you, everybody. As I said, it's a kind of very special day. We have two individuals who've done so much for the city in totally different roles, both stepping down or being honored here for their service on the same particular day. And there's a familiar face to all of us standing behind me, Dan Linsky, who is a neighbor of mine, a fellow graduate of Boston Latin School, and served honorably in the United States Marines, was appointed to the Boston Police Department in November of 1986, has 29 years of service to the city and to the BPD, was the Medal of Honor recipient of the department in both in the years 1990 and 94. And while working as a police officer at the BPD, he held the following ranks: patrolman, detective, sergeant, sergeant detective, lieutenant, lieutenant detective, deputy superintendent, chief of staff for the Police Commissioner, superintendent, superintendent of the Bureau of Field Services, and retiring as superintendent-in-chief. He retired from the BPD in June of 2014. And today, the Boston City Council recognizes Superintendent-in-Chief Daniel P. Linsky for his 29 years of dedicated service to the people of Boston as a member of the Boston Police Department. And the City Council does also hereby declare that today, December 3, 2014, be Daniel Linsky Day in the city of Boston. I'd like to present our honor.
Thank you very much. I don't know if I can show this at Macy's if I get 10% off with my Christmas shopping with the wife. I didn't know I was going to speak, but first off, thank you. With the exception of Counselor Zachem, it's only because you weren't in the position at the time, sir, but I work with every one of you on what we saw this week, right? The Boston Police Department being a national model in how policing should be done, whether it's dealing with large demonstrations, World Series championships, or the day-to-day duty relations that you were so crucial in being our partner with. You let us know who we should be talking to, what meetings we need to get to, what issues we needed to respond to. You never did not take my phone call, whether it was at midnight or 1:00 in the morning and I needed you to come to a scene or to get some information to you, or you were never shy in pushing information to us that was helpful in us doing that thing. And the President of the United States said it this week, that the Boston Police Department is one of the finest departments in the nation. I'm proud to be associated with the department. I'm proud of the men and women who I had the privilege to work with that entire time. And I want to thank you for your support over those years, whether it was budget support, whether it was emotional support, or the support you gave us in the community and neighborhoods. Community policing is the root of successful communities and neighbors and cities. And its birthplace is here, its incubation and place where it grows is here. And you're an amazing part of that and it was an amazing experience to be involved with you. I'm going around the country, working with other police departments, trying to help them learn the lessons that we've learned here in Boston to help them better community police their neighborhoods. And I want to thank you for all your support over the years. Thank you very much. Counsel for the US.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Counselor Murphy, for those two obvious important presentations today. There's over 50 years of service to our city and at the highest level. So thank you Elliot and Dan for being here and thank you for your service.
Don't forget.
If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honored the Mayor.
Docket number 1808, message and order approving the city of Boston's application to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordination Council for certified project status for 327-347 Summer Street, the Log Me In Project, the renovation of a presently vacant, fire-damaged building in the city of Boston Innovation District into a 117,000-square-foot office building located at the crosstown/South Boston Economic Opportunity Area, and for approval of a tax increment financing plan, including a tax increment financing agreement regarding the real estate taxes between the city and the Log Me In Project.
Docket 1808 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. Reports of public office and others, Madam Clerk.
Would you like me to read?
Yeah, could you read docket 1809 through 1812?
Docket number 1809, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances in 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 8, 2014. Docket number 1810, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 22, 2014. Docket number 1811, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 29, 2014. Docket number 1812, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of November 5, 2014.
Docket 1809 through 1812 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1813, communication was received from the mayor confirming the resignation of Robert Short Sleeves from the zoning board of appeals.
Docket 1813 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1814, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the city of Boston and the Bradford Towers 121A project, aka South Cove Plaza 121A project.
Docket 1814 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1815, notice was received from the mayor of his absence in the city December 1, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. until 5:55 p.m.
Docket 1815 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1567, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on October 8, 2014, docket number 1567, an ordinance extending protections for tenants facing displacement by condominium or cooperative conversion pursuant to the city's authority under State Statute 9 of 1983, Chapter 527, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 1567.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 1567 was sponsored by our colleague, City Council Josh Zachem. This ordinance will extend the current ordinance that grants protections for displaced tenants to December 31, 2019, will also increase displacement fees from $5,000 to $10,000 for elderly, disabled, and low-income tenants, and from $3,000 to $6,000 for all others. There was consensus, quite frankly, I think Counselor Zachem and I and our colleagues would like to see those numbers be even bigger than what they are, but consensus brought us to that point. We held a hearing on November 6. We heard from Sheila Dillon, Chief of the Department of Neighborhood Development, to express support for this ordinance and explain the acute rental housing emergency that currently exists in the city of Boston. And the acute emergency is what the criteria was allowing us to adjust those figures. The existing housing emergency authorizes local action under state law. And so we also heard from local residents, our constituents, local community development corporations, as well as other developers who expressed their support and their ideas around the ordinance. So at this time, I recommend passage of this ordinance and also would defer it to Counselor Zachem for his comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for your leadership and assistance on this hearing that we held. I also would just like to add that there was really quite a consensus at the hearing. We heard from advocates from across the city, from experts in the field like Chief Dillon, Mac McCray of Greater Boston Legal Services, who has joined us again here today to see this through. We talk all the time in this chamber at hearings in public about the issues of affordable housing in the city of Boston. And while this is by no means a solution, it is one of a potent tool that the state legislature has given the Boston City Council to help folks who are in danger of being displaced as the rental units that they have lived in sometimes for decades are converted into condominiums or co-ops and making sure that in a place where the average rent is $2,300, $2,400, $2,500 a month, that folks are going to have that assistance when they have to move, which often requires a first and last. to have that assistance when they have to move, which often requires a first and last month and security deposit, you know, $7,500, $8,000, $9,000 that many people obviously don't have on hand. But I think this is a critical step in the right direction to preserve what affordable housing we do have in the city, to make sure long-term tenants are protected, and to make sure that we have this emergency act to take. It's a temporary law. It needs to be reauthorized every five years, and it does require a two-thirds vote of this body to pass it. So certainly urge my colleagues to do that, to vote in favor. I think it's incredibly important, and we've heard nothing but positive statements on this. There was no dissension in either written or spoken testimony at the hearing. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consular Zachem. Consular Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1567. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1567 has been passed. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1658, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on October 22, 2014, docket number 1658, message and ordinance amending the city of Boston's code ordinances, Chapter 2, 11, 14, 16, and 18, concerning the registration and licensing of dogs, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Consular Flaherty, on docket 1658.
Mr. President, docket 1658 is Animal Care and Control Unit. It was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to committee back on October 22. We held a hearing here in the chamber on November 20 with Inspection Service Commissioner Buddy Christopher, Inspector John Meany, and Peter O'Sullivan from Property Management. This ordinance transfers Animal Control Unit as we know it from the Property Management Department over to Inspection Services Department, where folks and the consensus was that they would be better apt to deal with those issues. The ordinance addressed the registration and licensing of all dogs, including issues related to dangerous dogs, and also increased fines for violations. We also made some changes to clarify language explaining the penalty sections, both in Section 10 and 16, so that they would be consistent with the other ordinances that we were adjusting. So at this time, Mr. President, I'm recommending this ordinance be passed in a new draft. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Flaherty. Consular Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1658 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1658 has been passed in a new draft. I'd like to take a quick recess. Consular Flaherty, please. Consular Zachem, Madam Clerk. Council's back in session. Consular Flaherty, you have the floor.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move for reconsideration on docket 1567, although it was a unanimous vote in the sense of it was a sort of a broad roll. We're requesting a roll call voted this time. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on, second? Any objections? No. Okay. Would you please call the roll on docket 1567?
Consular Baker.
Yes.
Consular Baker, yes. Consular Siomo. Consular Siomo, yes. Consular Flaherty.
Yes.
Consular Flaherty, yes. Consular Jackson.
Yes.
Consular Jackson, yes. Consular Lamatina. Consular Lamatina, yes. Consular Linehan.
Yes.
Consular Linehan, yes. Consular McCarthy.
Yes.
Consular McCarthy, yes. Consular Murphy. Consular Murphy, yes. Consular O'Malley. Consular O'Malley, yes. Consular Presley. Consular Presley, yes. Consular Wu. Consular Wu, yes. Consular Yancy. Consular Yancy, yes. And Consular Zachem. Consular Zachem, yes. Mr. President, on docket number 1567, we have a unanimous vote.
We have confirmation of a unanimous vote on docket 1567. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1321.
Docket number 1321, the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, to which was referred on August 20, 2014, docket number 1321, a petition of Charles River Transportation Management Association for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston, submits a report recommending the petition ought to be denied.
Consular McCarthy on docket 1321.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had a committee, we held a meeting on September 23. Representatives from BTD, as well as Boston Police Department, were here. They were both on record as opposing granting this petition, stating that it did not meet the transportation services in the area, citing passenger, pedestrian, parking, and traffic concerns, maintenance and construction projects that are in the way in that area. I granted the petitioner an extension of time, requesting that they meet with BTD, Boston Police Department, as well as District Counselor Josh Zachem. At this time, they have made no attempt to reach out to any of the three parties, so at this time, I think this petition should be denied.
Thank you, Consular McCarthy. Consular McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and that the petition be denied, docket 1321. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1321 has been denied. That is recently heard for possible action.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1746, order that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the city of Boston for FY 2015 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be it further that pursuant to Chapter 403 of the Acts of 2000, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 30% of the average assessed value of all Class I residential parcels in the city of Boston be, and hereby, is approved for fiscal year 2015.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Consular Siomo, on docket 1746.
Thank you. This matter was sponsored by Consular Linehan on November 19. We held a hearing this past Monday on December 1. Commissioner Ron Rackau, our chief assessor, came down to provide testimony. This is action that the city council is required to take in order for our property tax rate to be certified, and for our property owners to receive the most generous residential exemption that's offered by the state. We are one of a handful of communities throughout the state who receive a 30% residential exemption for owner-occupied units. The minimum residential factor allows maximum discount for our property owners. The proposed residential exemption that allows for the 30% discount is an average annual savings of approximately $1,700 off our property tax bill, so I recommend that we pass this in order to get it certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Siomo. Okay. Consular Siomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1746. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1746 has been passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1556 through 1560, and also 1657 and 1680.
Docket number 1556, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $175,000 for the Paul Coverdell National Forensic Science Improvement Program Grant funded by the National Institute of Justice for the purpose of providing support to the forensic analysis unit of the Boston Police Department. Docket number 1557, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend the FFY 2014 Violence Against Women Act STOP Grant of $60,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security used to support the BPD civilian domestic violence advocate. Docket number 1558, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend $20,467 to fund the FY 13 Paul Coverdell National Forensic Sciences Improvement Program Grant funded by the National Institute of Justice and passed through from the Massachusetts State Police. Docket number 1559, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $10,000 from the FY 13 National Institute of Justice Social Sciences Research in Forensic Science, passed through the University of Illinois-Champaign for the purpose to support analysis data collection and reporting by the Boston Police Department's crime lab and Office of Research and Development. Docket number 1560, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $5,000 to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the purpose of collecting and reporting data. Docket number 1657, message and order authorizing Mayor's Office of Emergency Management to accept and expend a grant of $14,400,000 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's Urban Area Security Initiative Grant, FFY 2014, address the unique planning, training, exercise, equipment, and operational needs of large urban areas, and assist them in building an enhanced and sustainable capacity to prevent response to and recovery from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive incidents. Docket number 1680, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $1,738,847.37 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr., Community Safety Initiative Grant for the purpose of supporting strategies to address youth, gang, and gun violence.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Consular Murphy, on docket 1556 through 1560, 1657, and 1680. Consular Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, as a matter of housekeeping, I'd like to place on file docket 1558, 1559, and 1560, as they have been acted upon on the November 5 city council meeting, and were resubmitted a second time. So we did not hear them the other day. We did hear on the other four items. Docket 1556 is a Paul Coverdell Federal Grant of $175,000 to the police department for the purpose of providing support to the forensics analysis unit of the police department. We heard from Maria Chivers, who's the Director of External Funding from the police commissioner's office. The $175,000 is broken down in the following manner. $54,878 for a new database for the AFIS Automated Fingerprint Identification System. It will decrease the current backlog by 20%, and it will provide four new workstations with computers for the forensics unit. $115,190 for two contract consultants working within the latent print unit, which is also to help further backlog, and then there's an indirect fee of just under $5,000 for the grant administration for 1556. 1557 is a message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend the Violence Against Women Act for 2014, the STOP Grant in the amount of $60,000 from the state's Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and it's used to support a BPD civilian domestic violence advocate. It's $60,000, one full-time position, serves East Boston and Jamaica Plain neighborhoods, includes salary and fringe benefits. It continues the funding for an existing position which works out of the city's Family Justice Center in Brighton. This position funds both the person who works for A-7 and E-13. We also have other folks that are funded on different grants, working out of B-2, B-3, and C-11 police stations on domestic violence advocates. 1657 is the U.S.C. grant, which we receive every year from the federal government. It's from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. It's $14.4 million, and as you all know, the way Homeland Security has been broken up, there are urban area security initiatives throughout the country. We are Region 1, and we are one of nine cities and towns, but we're the umbrella, the pass-through for all of the nine. And we had testimony the other day from Nancy Henderson, the Deputy Director of the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management, and Deirdre Habishaw, who used to be a staffer in then- Consular Feeny's office, who now works for the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. FEMA determines the amount granted. It's a two-year grant. It serves to address planning, training, and exercise, and equipment and operational needs for large urban areas, and to assist them in building an enhanced and sustainable capacity to prevent, respond to, and recover from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive incidents. It supports interdepartmental capabilities. It partially funds the BRIC, the Boston Regional Intelligence Center, which is located at Schroeder Plaza, BFD, Boston Fire, Boston Police, Boston EMS, and their other city-and-town counterparts in the Urban Area Security Initiative. And we've been doing this since, I believe, 2003. We get this money, and I've been Chair of Public Safety for most of that time, and on April 15 of 2013, we had an incident at the finish line of the marathon, and I, for one, and I have, you know, I have the hearing every year about what this is for, I was there, and I saw it work right in front of me, all these different agencies able to communicate with one another, working in tandem. So it does, in fact, make a difference, boots-on-the-ground-wise. And docket 1680 is the Shannon Grant, which comes through every year. It's a little bit reduced this year. It's usually around $2 million. It's $1.738 million, and it comes from the state. It's named after the former Public Safety Chair, Senator Charlie Shannon, who passed away a few years ago. And it's broken out in the following ways. It's, the purpose is to support strategies to address youth, gang, and gun violence. Of the $1.738 million, $475,000 goes to a partnering agency called Youth Options Unlimited for intensive case management and counseling, GED and academic support, job training, and the like. $228,000 to the Youth Connect Boys and Girls Clubs for placing licensed social workers in Boston police stations to provide prevention and intervention for at-risk youth and families. $100,000 to the Boston Public Health Commission for trauma assessment, psychological first aid, coping groups, stabilization groups, and for community residents who experience trauma as a result of unexpected violence. $258,000 for the Boston Police Department for services through project coordination, data collection, and analysis by the- data collection, and analysis by the PACT analyst. Operation Home Front by the school police unit, Operation Nightlight and Ceasefire by the Youth Violence Strike Force, and a newly-formed Shannon Youth Council, and $100,000 for the Boston Center for Youth and Families to stipends for the Girls' Leadership Corps programs to teach and model nonviolent conflict resolution leadership, civic responsibility, and self-esteem building to at-risk youth, and stipends for youth outreach by the Street Worker Program. There are 25 groups that benefit from this grant. They include the Boston Public Schools, the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, the Brookline Police Department, Safe City Collaborative, Dorchester Youth Collaborative, Ecumenical Social Action Committee, Youth Workers Alliance, Black Ministerial Alliance, Inquilino Buracas and Action IBA, Project Right, Resilient Coders, Mission Safe, Justice Research Institute, Inc., Lewis D. Brown Peace Institute, Youth Build, Mothers for Justice Equality, Collegebound Dorchester, and the like. And then a $54,000 indirect grant administration fee, bringing the total to $175,000. There are matching funds that also go into the areas of District B-2, B-3, and C-11 from the city of Boston. The grant spending period is from 1/1/2015 to 12/31/2015. I recommend passage on all of these aforementioned dockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. So Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1556. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1556 has been passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1557. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1557 has been passed. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1657. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1657 has been passed. And Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1680. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1680 has been passed. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1246, order for hearing regarding transportation regulation in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't know if anybody heard, we had a meeting on Monday. Docket number 1246 was sponsored by Council President Bill Linehan. It was a six-and-a-half-hour hearing. I'm going to read the minutes.
Oh, good.
There were a lot of points, and there were a lot of counterpoints from Uber, Lyft, Taxi, as well as the union reps. There were many questions that certainly were not answered. We'll continue to wait for those answers. I recommend that we place us back in the committee until we get those answers for further discussion.
Docket 1246 will remain in the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1730, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $1,320,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources for the Community Clean Resiliency Initiative Project Implementation Grant to be administered by the city's Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space Department.
Due to the seven, six-and-a-half-hour hearing held on Monday, Counselor and Committee Chair of I Am in Fox, Counselor O'Malley, had postponed this particular hearing. The hearing is rescheduled for Thursday, December 4th, 2014, at noon. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1733, message transmitting a resolution for approval that will continue redevelopment of North Hampton Square campus in the South End, order authorizing certain leases and conveyances by the Boston Public Health Commission of the former Boston City Hospital School of Nursing Campus to facilitate the component of site redevelopment known as North Hampton Phase II.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, Counselor Lamontino, on 1733.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, we held a hearing on docket number 1733, which was sponsored by the mayor on November 19, which is an order authorizing certain leases and conveyance by the Boston Public Health Commission of the former Boston City Hospital School of Nursing Campus to facilitate the component of site redevelopment known as North Hampton Phase II. The redevelopment of North Hampton Square Phase I was passed by this body in 2013 under docket 0310. Phase I of this project used the condominium law to facilitate commercial development and provides for separate financing. The Phase I also renovated the building at 35 North Hampton Street. The order before us today will continue this redevelopment and will allow for all remaining phases of the project. The order will, the order before us will amend the condominium agreements, authorize the convenience of Harrison Tower, allow for affordable housing and renovation, create interest by air rights, and complete construction of a new tower, which is the Albany Tower, pervade space and Mandarin, the Mandarin Framer building and commercial street-level space to the Boston Medical Center. The end result will be, there will be 565 units of housing, at least 64%, which will be affordable. It provides the Boston Public Health Commission with 1.5 annual lease payment and $9 million lump sum payment for the Albany Tower, and improves accessibility to the residents, particularly the fitness center and the garage for the disabled. It provides office space for the BPAC and the Boston EMS, and provided green roof improvements over the garage space for urban guiding for the residents and office personnel. Now, this order requires two votes, and they have to be at least two weeks apart, and must be supported by the supermajority. So we need to take a vote today, and on December 17, we must take another vote.
Thank you for those instructions.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since I was so fortunate to get this precinct this January, I've been working with Trinity closely on this project. It's basically a concrete structure dating back to the '60s that was in need of, need of repair. The city wasn't in the position to necessarily undertake those renovations. There are some concerns with, with the space for EMS, training space, to make sure that there is space set aside in this, in this new, in this new building here. Also, South End Fitness has been somewhat of a concern, how that gets, how that is going to get some, some money pumped into it. I think we'll, those will be continuing discussions. But also, BMC will buy some of the commercial space and possibly develop over the commercial space on, on Massachusetts Avenue. There were some concern that the lease payment would only be in 1.5 million a year for 99 years. That was a bit of concern. Some people would have liked to have seen, myself included, would like to have seen that in, you know, incremental years maybe go up, but that, the deal was structured years ago. But I think all in all, we'll end up, we'll end up with good space for the Public Health Commission, and I just wanted to stand and speak in favor of this. Thank you. As the district counselor.
As the district counselor.
Thank you.
Sorry for interrupting you. Counselor Baker, thank you. Counselor Jackson.
As the former district counselor for, for that area, I want to speak in favor of this. I think this is a great effort relative to a public-private partnership. Trinity is a trusted partner in our community, and this is one, so folks know, those apartments are actually being redone. Every one of those units is, is being redone, and they have a really interesting model. People don't move out of their home. They're actually able to do it with them in, in their homes. This job is one that has put a lot of people to work, and it also preserves in perpetuity lots of affordable housing. And we all know about the issue of expiring youth. We know that we're losing affordable housing faster than we're able to produce it. This codifies that and puts it all together. In addition, it also provides, in a neighborhood that has a lot of affordable housing, another housing option in some market-rate housing. So we are able then to begin to diversify the housing. One other point that was a point of contention was that the pool in the original version was going to be closed. This actually is going to preserve the pool as well as the South End Fitness Center. So I think this is a project where the community's voice was listened to, the people who live in, that live in these apartments was, was listened to, and we're actually in a situation where we were able to preserve affordable housing as well as bring online a new housing. So it seems to be a win-win-win all around for the, the new counselor who represents that, that district. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I did receive some of the information I requested at the hearing concerning the breakdown of contracts between Boston residents and, and people of color. I haven't completed my review, but I'm not going to allow that to stand in the way of giving an initial first reading on this. But I will say that I'm very familiar with Trinity, and I've worked with them for the better part of the last two decades now, several projects within my district, and a new one that will be going up opposite the Caruth Building in Dorchester. So we have ample time to deal with any concerns that I have about this. But I would like Trinity to know, and other developers to know, that we have to work very hard to ensure that the residents of their developments do have community rooms and other amenities, particularly for the family development. And while there's some challenges remaining on the Matterpan Campus, that Trinity is actively involved with specifically Matterpan Heights, some concerns, we even raised a public hearing on a different subject last evening. I think that this is a worthy project and should go forward, and I'm sure we have another couple of weeks to iron out any concerns I have about the MWBE number. So I will be voting for it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. So as the Chairman has articulated, this docket requires two separate roll call votes. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the first roll call vote?
Docket number 1733, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamontina. Counsel Lamontina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancy. Counsel Yancy, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. On docket number 1733, we have a unanimous vote for the first reading, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1733 has received its first reading unanimously, and it will be assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0719.
Docket 0719, order for hearing to discuss diversity in post-secondary institutions.
Counselor Jackson, the Chair of the Committee on Education.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday morning, I was at Suffolk Superior Court with Lisa Mackey from the Corporation Council Office, and myself, as well as one of my staff members, Vatsyri Sinbong Sai. We were there to enforce the summons and subsequent subpoena that was issued based on non-attendance of Boston University. We were, prior to the, prior to seeing the judge, we were able to come to a, a date, a mutually agreed-upon date, and Dr. Brown from Boston University will be here on December 19 at 1:30, and we will need to suspend, suspend the rules to allow that to happen. But I believe that, I'm very confident that we did the right thing. We extended this opportunity for Boston University to attend, to discuss a very important matter, which is diversity in hiring and staffing at an institution that's in the top five of employers in the city of Boston. Boston University has over 9,700 employees. And Boston University is also unique in that Boston University is the alma mater of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It would be my expectation that an institution with, with graduates such as that would want to come to the council and discuss all of their hiring policies and procedures that they would, would want to let people know about their procurement and all other aspects of diversity in, in the university. And so I'm very happy to report to the council that we will have that opportunity to hear from Dr. Brown, the president of Boston University, and also that the, this is a very serious matter, that the, the issues that are put forward amongst this council is not about any individual, it's about the public being able to hear, and the council being able to gather the important information that we need to move forward in, in creating policy. So I am very happy to let my colleagues know that we will be able to come to a mutually agreed-upon decision on the 19th, and I would invite you, if you are here, to be present at that hearing with Dr. Brown from Boston University. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend Counselor Jackson on his efforts to bring Boston University's president to these chambers. John Silver didn't, in fact, appear in this body a couple of decades ago. He wasn't forced to do so with regards to a subpoena, but there was a similar issue as well as the Boston Public Schools. And I believe that it's important for all of the major institutions within the greater Boston area to recognize their responsibility to help level the playing field, because the issue of disparities is a critical one. And every once in a while, we see nationally the impact of disparities. I think when we were witnessing all the demonstrations around the United States of America concerning the incident in Ferguson, the root cause of a lot of that happens to be disparity, so that Boston University can set a great example for other institutions of higher education with regards to not only its faculty and staff, but particularly the students, just as this body raises the issue of disparities almost on a monthly, if not a weekly basis, in terms of how, what type of example we're setting in city government to help level the playing field. I know nine of our colleagues voted to support at least a first reading of building a brand-new high school in the city of Boston, because many of the students graduating from the Boston Public School system would be applying to BU and other institutions, but they are competing with students who have first-class facilities. And the, the most recent high school we've built in the city of Boston was 1979. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace that we are allowing our children not to have facilities similar to other students who are applying to Boston University. And I'm sure one of the issues that BU will raise, as they have in the past, is the quality of preparation for many of our students. Our students are just as bright as other students, but they are hampered and almost handcuffed, if I can use that analogy, because they do not have all the science labs, all the athletic facilities, and other amenities that suburban high school students can take for granted. That's an issue that this body can stand up and shine on as well. So I commend Counselor Jackson, and I'm looking forward to the hearing on December 19. And I also support the next item that we will be considering on Rule 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. For clarification, we'll be handling that matter during the late For clarification, we'll be handling that matter during the late-bell session of the session. Counselor Jackson, I see your button is pressed.
I'm sorry to, I'm not trying to beligate the point. I just wanted to make also one thing clear. As we have conversations about the Black and Latino men, as we have conversations about, and important conversations that our body has led nationally, as we have conversations about My Brother's Keeper and those conversations, we can't just simply restate the problem. We actually have to look for solutions. And we find those solutions in areas that we do well in, in the city of Boston. What we're known for is higher ed, high tech, healthcare, and banking and finance. We need to be partnering with those fields to provide opportunities and to make the whole city of Boston strong and opening doors of opportunities in that space. And so that's also why there's a focus here. The other piece, and I would also speak to critics of bringing the university here based on some of the great work that Counselor Murphy has done around pilot payments and the negotiations in that space. Pilot payments are payments that the universities should be making. And they're still not the same payment that we voted on today relative to what you and I pay. And so pilot payments are what no one is going to applaud us on April 15th when we pay our taxes. Pilot payments are the payments that we've partnered with colleges and universities as well as hospitals to pay. And so again, I think this is an important and valid conversation, one that I want to thank my colleagues for supporting us on. And it's the beginning of a conversation in terms of our ability to get the discovery that we need in order to make thoughtful policy moving into the future. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket 0179 will remain in the Committee on Education. motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1816, Counselor Murphy and Linehan offer the following order for hearing regarding the cost of living adjustment, known as COLA, for retirees and raising the base amount.
Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy on docket 1816.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mass. General Law, Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2010 allows for a COLA increase for retirees of the Commonwealth, and it has to go through the city retirement board and through the legislative process at the city. The maximum base on which a COLA is calculated in Boston right now is $13,000. And that was raised in 2012 by the Boston Retirement Board and subsequently by a vote of this council. At that time, I and other members of the council had advocated for an increase to the amount of $15,000 on the COLA base, would have added probably $80 a year to every retiree that is in our system. The Menino administration and the Municipal Research Bureau argued against it, and the retirement board only offered to go up from $12,000 to $13,000 at the time. I was seeking $12,000 to $15,000. Some of those very same retirees that were seeking for the council to move it to $15,000 have come back requesting that we move it upward. We can move it upward incrementally to 14 or to 15 or up as high as 18, as some cities and towns, $18,000, as some cities and towns have done already for their retirees. But what needs to happen is we need to hold a hearing on it. We need to get the retirement board to put it on its radar screen and vote on it, and then the city council could vote on it as well. So I'm asking with this step, with your support, Mr. President, that we at least hold a hearing and satisfy the retirees that are asking for action from this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the makers, the at-large counsel from Hyde Park, Counselor Murphy and yourself, Mr. President, for putting this forward. I ask that my name be added, long overdue, and appreciate your and Counselor Murphy's work on this for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Baker? So please add Counselor O'Malley's name, add Counselor Baker's name, add Counselor McCarthy's, Counselor Lamatina's, Counselor Yancey's name. And please add Counselor Flaherty's name. Good timing. Docket 1816 is assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1817, Counselor Murphy offers the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding all executive orders enacted by this or any previous administration, which are in effect and are related to expenditures, including but not limited to compensation and/or salaries.
Counselor Murphy, you're a busy man today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak on this matter because it's an outgrowth of the hearing that we held on the salary for the president of the Boston Public Library. And I guess you're never too old or too experienced to learn. And I've been around a long time, and it was the first time I'd actually seen a deliberate attempt, I think, to go around this body and our authority to appropriate funds using an executive order mechanism. And it's a dangerous thing to have happen for the city charter and for the people of Boston. And they did it, they played fast and loose. Each year, we have the budget, and when you turn to a department head on the budget or a department of the budget, it has a salary for every employee, including the presidents of the library. And then it has another line item that says "other," and that's right after salary. So that would lead a reasonable person to believe that "other" is other than salary or other than compensation. And there was a hidden amount of money in that "other" line item that the trustees of the public library through executive order, signed by Mayor Menino at the time in 2010, December of 2010, to get an additional $20,000 in salary through the appropriations process of the city council as an "other" expenditure. And the first time I or anybody on this body saw that was at the hearing about 10 days ago, four years later. So I said at the hearing that I wanted to know how many other executive orders doing an end around the city council that were out there. And I'm understanding from reverberations in the building that there are lots of them. And they're keeping their copiers busy getting that information back to us. So this just is filed this week. They have seven days. Mr. President, I'm going to insist on the seven days, that this be responded to within seven days. If it isn't responded to by next Wednesday, I think you have a number of things you can do in your purview, and I'm going to try to insist that you do them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure you will. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, during the hearing concerning the leadership and financial operations of the Boston Public Library that I chaired, I was quite surprised, as Counselor Murphy was, of this side agreement. And I was particularly surprised because when we reviewed the operation of the Boston Public Libraries earlier this year, I inquired what was contained within the others category. And I don't recall, it may have been mentioned, but I don't recall this being mentioned. Mr. President, we're paying our president of the Boston Public Library, who I have a great deal of admiration and respect for, and I always compliment her on being able to open two new libraries within her first year here in the city of Boston. But she's earning more than $200,000 a year. And that is not disclosed within the financial review of the Boston Public Library. And that's a very significant flaw. So henceforth, of course, when I sit down with department heads, I'm going to insist that they describe in more explicit detail what's included in these miscellaneous categories. I've yet to receive a significant amount of information on contracts. And all of you have been reading the front page of the Herald earlier this week, and you learned that there are some departments that are skirting around some of our internal operations in terms of maximum number of dollars that you can get without going out to bid. That's very concerning to me. It's very concerning to the Walsh administration. But it's all in the name of transparency. And I take this opportunity, Mr. President, to remind the administration that there are a number of items listed on the 17F orders which have yet to be responded to, including a list of all boards, commissions, and authorities by name, date established, enabling legislation, name, title, race, gender, address, and term, including requests for information about active employees. Representative of the administration here today, and I still insist that this body receive this information. I'm going to make a series of recommendations to this body in light of the review we did this year, and this has been one of the most comprehensive reviews of the administration in years. One recommendation is that the administration provide each member of this body with a monthly report in terms of revenue and expenditure. In the past, my practice has been to take a look at this on a quarterly basis. But given the revelations in the media, it seems to me that we should be taking a closer look on a more regular basis. So I rise to support suspension and passage of the 17F order offered by Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Murphy moves suspension and passage of docket 1817. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 1817 has been passed.
Docket number 1818, Counselor Yancey and Presley offer the following order for hearing to investigate current and possible future services for women survivors of homicide in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey on docket 1818.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, you may have heard about Mary Franklin. She actually received probably more than one resolution from this body. She suffered, you know, in a horrendous loss 18 years ago. Her husband intervened when someone was being attacked on his street. I believe it was in the heart of my district at the time. And his intervention actually resulted in his death. He did not apparently know the assailant. A person was rescued by him, but he was actually stabbed in the altercation while he tried to rescue someone. But unfortunately, that homicide has yet to be solved. And 18 years later, Mary Franklin, the widow of this hero, is still searching for answers. She's still trying to deal with the pain caused by the loss of a loved one. It's been a very frustrating journey for her, so much so that earlier in November last month, she actually staged what we used to call a sit-in. She actually spent, I believe, three nights at the police headquarters to draw attention to the fact that she didn't feel that survivors of homicides, particularly women survivors of homicides, had a real safe place to discuss their cases with detectives. And for their part, the police department has attempted to accommodate her concerns in the past, but she obviously is not satisfied about it. So hearing about her story and knowing that she was in frail health even before staying in the very cold corridors of the entrance of the Boston Police Headquarters, I went over there to see what I could do to persuade her to go home, quite frankly. And I was persuasive that night because she did agree to leave, but it was based on some condition. And I had an opportunity to speak with the police commissioner and others who were really concerned. And one of those conditions was that she meet with the police commissioner to discuss these concerns. And that was arranged, and we actually did meet with the police commissioner the next day. During that meeting, we agreed that the city as a whole would take a look at what services we're providing to families and particularly women survivors of homicides. And that's the purpose of this particular hearing order. But I think each of us should be thankful that we don't have to go through this pain on a daily basis. There, but for the grace of God, go I. And many of our families have suffered losses like that. And I think the city is in a position to provide some services, not only on the status of the homicide investigation, assuming that that's continuing, in this case in the Code Case Squad, but also taking a look at how children are impacted by homicides in the city of Boston and to build on the work done in previous years, including the great work done by Counselor Presley. And before here, we convened a number of hearings on the subject as well. So I'm looking forward to passage of this hearing order. But I'm also appealing to each and every one of you to continue your advocacy for victims of homicides and to keep up your demonstration of compassion for people who suffer this type of loss and ask the question, what can we do as a legislative body? And what can we do as a city government spending $2.7 billion a year to provide some solace to these families who seemingly have lost everything? So thank you very much for allowing me to speak a few extra minutes on the subject. I believe Mary Franklin and the many other survivors of homicides deserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all may recall, at our last meeting, I reminded everyone that we are in the midst of Survivors of Homicide Victims Awareness Month, which is November 20th to December 20th. Certainly during the holiday season, when there's an empty seat at the table, these losses, these tragic and violent losses, are more pronounced and more profound. But those in the wake of homicide, those survivors, live with that pain and sit in that residual trauma for the rest of their lives. This is a neighborhood transcendent issue, even if there are neighborhoods that disproportionately bear the brunt of this trauma. This is everyone's problem. There is not a neighborhood in this city that has not been impacted by violence, by homicide. I've participated in meetings in West Roxbury, in Rosendale, in Charlestown, in South Boston. We have many worthy efforts to support families in the wake of that trauma, including our own Boston Public Health Commission. I do want to say, I'm very grateful that we have a mayor who has said in 2014, we will not just talk about trauma, but we will treat it. But many of those community-based organizations, such as the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute and Mothers for Justice and Equality, have a curriculum and a messaging that is very focused on parents who have lost children to homicide and not the wives, the sisters. And if we really want to be responsible here and effective in stemming the tide of violence, it is not only about prevention and intervention, but it is also about the aftermath. And so in the same way that in 2010, this body convened the first ever listening-only hearing, I held a family voices hearing with some 300 families impacted by homicide so that we could listen and learn from them. And we had two victories from that, and we're still going through the report to see more done. But the first was a bereavement room established at the Boston Medical Center. The second was that providers would come together and meet on a monthly basis. The second was that providers would come together and meet on a monthly basis. And we know that the best solutions are informed by those who have been the most impacted. And so this is an opportunity for us to do that and to ensure that in our approach to stem the tide of violence and to support survivors, that we are specialized in that approach. And as you all know, I've been very passionate about how do we have gender-specific and responsive programming and strategies across the board in youth development in the wake of trauma from domestic violence or sexual assault or human trafficking. So this is just one other population and impacted group that I think we need to consider. So I thank Counsel Yancey for inviting me to partner with him on this. I thank Mary Franklin for making sure that we do not forget her husband, Melvin, because very often we can talk in statistics. And it's important that we continue to put a face to those numbers that we so easily bandy about. And so I thank Mary Franklin for her vigilance in the memory of her husband. But again, there are many, many Mary Franklins, and so that really is what this hearing order is about. So I hope all of you will participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel LaMettina.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to commend Counsel Yancey and Counsel Presley and ask that my name be added. Jesus, 30-something years ago, when my cousin Alan was murdered, and my Aunt Mary, who lives in my mother's house on the first floor, still suffered 30-something years later. And 30-something years ago, we didn't have that support. She didn't have that support. And I remember the suffering that my aunt went through 30-something years ago and what she's still going through today. She's 84 years old. She'll be 85 years old, lost her only son, and she suffers. And they do need advocate. She had no advocate. We had, you know, I know Counsel Flaherty, at the time, we tried to pass some legislation where we would go to a homicide site and clean up. I still remember that day when I had to clean up my cousin's blood, and it was the worst day of my life, my brother. There was no services around to do that for our family at that time. So I hope we have this hearing that we could really look at that issue again. Like I said, it still haunts me, that scene on August 5th, 1981, at 65 plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel LaMettina. Please add Counsel LaMettina's name, Counsel O'Malley's name, Counsel Wu's name, Counsel Zakim's name, Counsel Murphy, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo's name, Counsel Flaherty. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to recognize, obviously, my colleague for reminding me of the trauma response unit that this body led efforts to have and add my name, and would love to see the focus of this effort put right at the time the incident takes place. When what happens was when violent crime happens, the homicide tape goes up, the investigation, the detectives, and they spend a significant amount of time combing through evidence. And then hours later, when the police leave and the district attorney's office leaves and other emergency medical services leave, they cut the crime scene tape, and then the family now comes to that site. It could be on a street corner, it could be in a home. And it's not only with victims of homicides, it's also for those that take their own lives and their family members have to come in to a pretty gruesome scene, as what Counsel LaMettina had just alluded to. So having those very necessary and precious sort of trauma response services right out of the gate are invaluable to helping families start to, particularly, you know, women survivors of homicide, to deal with that. So I would, again, like to have my name added and hope to resurrect the trauma response division. And for those that are not aware of it, the trauma response division fell under inspectional services because during the hearing, we learned that it's the homeowners' insurance actually will pay for the service. So there's a direct reimbursement to the city if the city's involved, or it allows those that are on site to reach out to the very capable services that are out there to engage them at a very early stage. It reminded me of not too long ago, meeting a woman over at the Pine Street Inn. They had a forum for the council, and I met with the woman there who was walking by every day, the site of where her son was murdered. And it was several weeks later, and that site, you still saw the dried-up blood and some of the remainers of the EMT's response. They're there just to save the life, so they're ripping things out, and they're pulling paper, and there's tags and wrappers and logos. And the stuff was still sort of rolled up in the corner where her son was slain, and it was probably a good six or eight weeks later. But things like that, just being sensitive to that initial response, I think will go a long way in what I think Counsel Yancey and Counsel Presley have been advocating for. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name, add the chair's name. Counsel Jackson.
Please add my name, Mr. President. I just want to thank Counsel Yancey for his leadership in this space, as well as Counsel Presley. Hearing the voice of someone who's hurting and not judging, as many folks do. I also want to thank Counsel LaMettina for sharing his personal story. I think it's absolutely critical that as we have these conversations and we get a big bundle of numbers every quarter from the police, which is great, but there are people behind those individual numbers. I think Counsel Flaherty's suggestion around what happens at crime scenes is absolutely critical. I've received several calls, who fixes the door, who cleans up the blood, and all of the other things that are there. But not only is there blood, as well as broken doors, there's broken hearts that we have to deal with also. So the work that happens at the Boston Public Health Commission and scaling that work up, we know that it is important for someone to be served with some type of emergency help from the Boston Public Health Commission in a 72-hour timeframe. We know that even though last year we had 50 or less murders, we had 254 shootings. So there are people who are walking around who are wounded and their families are wounded. So it's absolutely critical that we are thoughtful around this. And I think, and lastly, and this may seem very simple to some folks, in many parts of our city, we have a virtual graveyard in terms of poles with teddy bears and candles around them. And many people grieve in that way, and we have to work to meet them where they're at to help them learn how to grieve because their loved one's life is not represented in the place that they died. It actually is represented in how they live. And one of the things that we also should do is have some type of standard operating procedure for what do you do with that stuff and that it gets returned to families. And lastly, Mr. President, and under your leadership, I would definitely love to have the Boston Public Health Commission come in, as they have done in the past, and do a training for all of us. We will each, regardless of what neighborhood we live in or what neighborhood we serve, deal with this, and we will be a part of families who are making this connection. And so we should also be trained in that first aid for folk. So I think that's one of the things that, as a council, we should be part of. But I want to thank the two co-authors on this for their leadership. And there's a lot more that we need to do to help put folks' lives and their families back together after incidents like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel Yancey and Counsel Presley, as to a point that Counsel Jackson brought up is the removing of the memorials in a very solemn way. As a former member of the Basic City Services Team, we had great strides in doing this, working with the local reverends, church, priests, temple, as well as the local CSOs, maybe even having small ceremonies. So as we move ahead, let's bring that piece in to docket number 1818 as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. 1818 is assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. At this time, I'd like to ask my colleague to come into executive session. I have a few administrative matters that I would like to share with you regarding going into the end of the year. And this is a unique situation where we have a two-year term for president, and I just wanted to clarify some of that stuff. Madam Cook, would you come in and please record that and a couple other matters? It'll be about 15 minutes, and we'll be right back to our normal set. Executive session, please. Nicole.
... to hold a hearing on docket number 0719 on December 19, 2014, at which time this matter will be placed on file. This was filed in the city council.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you so much. As I noted earlier, our session ends on the 17th, so this is a requirement for us to suspend Rule 25. I'd like to suspend and pass. I want to just take the time out to speak about the dedication of our staff here at the city council. So two of our staff members, Carrie, as well as Juan, were supposed to be on vacation that day. And when they found out that we had this opportunity to have this hearing, neither one of them blinked, and they both said that they would be here to staff this. And at a time when a lot of folks point fingers at city employees and people who do public service, we have a group of people in our central staff who are willing to do extra. When something is needed to be done, they step forward, and they do right by our council and the people of the city of Boston. I just want to take the time to thank both Carrie and Juan, but also to thank the public servants who serve in our central staff and who do great work every day. And I just feel very moved that they would actually take from their time and their families to come forward and actually do this. And so I'm going to be asking for suspension and passage, but just wanted to share that note of appreciation. Thank you.
Do we need a second on that, Madam Clerk? All right. So at this time, Counselor Jackson requests suspension of the rules, of Rule 25, and the allowance, the suspend to allow the Committee on Education to hold a hearing on docket 0719 on December 19, 2014, at which time the matter will be placed on file. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the first late file matter has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page three of the green sheets, docket 0180, for a second reading.
On the third, I have to read.
Hold on. Recession, please. Matter was tabled by Counselor Yancey, and Counselor Yancey wants the matter to remain tabled, and therefore, the matter will not be postponed. Anybody else? Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Page three of 17 on the green sheets, docket number 1595.
Madam Clerk, could you please read that?
In the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, docket number 1595, sponsored by the mayor, message and order approving an appropriation of $467,804 from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund for projects that will ornament the city streets, ways, squares, and parks. Refer to the committee on October 22.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I brought this out of the green sheets a couple of weeks ago, and there was a question that since has been answered regarding the Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial. There are several, it's $467,804 to be spent on many projects throughout the city. I listed them before, Fenway Civic, Mathers School, Emerald Necklace, Beirut Memorial Fund, John Hall Mall in Charleston, Alston Brighton Community Development, Stanley Bellevue Neighborhood Group in Dorchester, Friends of the Symphony Park, and Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative. We did receive a letter from Vivian Leonard, Vivian Leo, rather, the First Assistant Collector of the Treasurer, that explained why the Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial was not on this docket. Additional funds had already been implemented for that, and additional request does not require additional city approval. So I'd like to have this docket passed.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, as you know, when this matter was first brought up, I raised an objection because it did not include the Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial. I am Vice Chair of the Brown Fund, and we did, in fact, approve this. So I was concerned that we were asked to vote on a matter that did not include this appropriation, which was approved unanimously by the Brown Fund. As Counselor McCarthy mentioned, we did receive a letter from the Collector Treasurer saying that it was not necessary for us to, as a body, to appropriate an additional $50,000 for this purpose. While I'm not totally convinced that this is the accurate reading of this matter, I do reserve the right to bring this back before the body if it is necessary to clean up any legal or bureaucratic issues that may surround this, because it is an additional appropriation of $50 million. And my interpretation is that it should have been brought before. But I don't want to hold up the allocation to those other worthy projects that the Brown Fund, including myself, approved. But I do ask that, working with the administration, we get better clarification, because in the past, we have come back with supplemental appropriation that did, in fact, come back to the city council. And I just have that institutional memory. But for the sake of funding those other organizations and have a written commitment from the Treasurer that the Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial Fund will, in fact, receive the additional $50,000, I'm asking that we support and vote for this matter and support the recommendation of the chair. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, what is the number of that docket?
Docket number 159.
Counselor McCarthy moves at docket 1595. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 1595 has passed. Anyone else want to move anything from the green sheets? Nope. There are three late file matters on the consent agenda, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Counselor Baker, for what reason do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement, please.
Any objections? Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you. I rise today to just, I want to publicly thank my father. He, if people have anybody that are in recovery, you know how difficult it would be to get a one-year chip or a medallion, they call it. He was always known in the halls as Mr. Baker. It's supposed to be an anonymous program, but he was always Mr. Baker, so it wasn't anonymous for him. He always wore his intentions on his sleeve. So tomorrow night, I won't be in town, but I want to thank him publicly. He's not watching. He won't even listen. Nobody will even tell him. But I have to do it for my person. He will be receiving his 50-year medallion. He's been sober for 50 years, and because of that...[1464.33][1464.33](APPLAUSE) Thank you. Because of the choice that he made 50 years ago, we were able to have a good life. It was a difficult life. We didn't have that much, but it was a good life. And just a funny fact, we were supposed to give it to him last week. It was a standing-room-only crowd, and he didn't show up. So they're going to give it to him. They're going to give it to him tomorrow night. Thank you.
Congratulations, John, and to all the Baker family. Counselor Flaherty, for what purpose do you rise?
Request unanimous, request to make a statement.
Any objections? Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind our colleagues that at 3 o'clock today, representatives from all the community health centers, there'll be 25 communities' health centers represented today to come to the Pmonte Room, give our colleagues an update as to what's going on with the local community health center, and talk about some new programming, as well as a continuum of the great relationship that they enjoy with this body. So I hope that each of you can stop by a few minutes of your time to check in with your local community health center representative for the at-large colleagues, to come in and find out what's happening in other parts, pockets of the city. And if you're not able to make it, if you could send one of your trusted staff members to come in and take some notes and get some business cards. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. I'd ask all guests and members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Robert Cahill. For Counselor Siomo, Mary Elaine Hugatz. For Counselor Siomo and Murphy, Patrick J. Honig. For Counselor Lamatina, Catherine Bartlett. Eugene Buddy Whelan. Stanley Wright. Joseph Lamoore Jr. For Counselors Flaherty and Linehan, Paul W. Flaherty and Eileen C. Nagel. For Counselor McCarthy, Ann May Lang McCarthy, Tim Zant. For Counselor O'Malley, Catherine Bowen McIntyre. And Peter Trion, Matt's cousin. And for Counselor Yancey, Adila De Vega. Jack C. Pritchett Jr. And Marion Barry, the mayor of Washington, D.C. Please a moment of silence. And can we suspend that moment of silence? Because I lost a piece of paper, and I want to also conclude Samuel Perry and Tamir Wright. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, December 10, 2014, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.